Adrianne Brightfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Monday, February 19th, 2024, at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for February 19th, 2024. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any public input on the item they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appear on the broadcast and live stream and posted on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function, or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to during the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councilmembers Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Rousell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Thank you. Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
And City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you, Mayor Kavanaugh. I will turn it over to you for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Adrian. I invite all who are able to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic, the virgin sands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next are proclamations. Our first proclamation is National Eating Disorder Awareness Week.
Okay, and I believe it's Jamie Shadler?
Shadler.
Shadler, thank you very much, Jamie. Come on up to accept this proclamation tonight.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Shadler. Eating Disorder Awareness Week is February 26th through March 1st. For many years, I suffered from an eating disorder. A few years ago, I found my strength to beat this disease. So many suffer in silence and so many have reached out to me, sharing their stories. Some have yet to find their voice. For those who have not found their voice, I've made it my mission to be their voice. This is why I'm here tonight. I'm here tonight to accept this amazing proclamation. I would like to thank everyone on their support throughout my journey, specifically NAMI Dubuque. I will forever keep advocating and being the voice of so many who are suffering. Thank you.
Jamie, thank you very much for being here to accept this proclamation this evening and share that message with us. We sincerely appreciate it.
Thank you.
City Dubuque Proclamation: Whereas eating disorders are serious mental illnesses that affect people of all ages, genders, races, and ethnicities; and whereas eating disorders have the highest mortality rate of any mental illness; and whereas early detection and intervention can lead to better outcomes for individuals with eating disorders; and whereas raising awareness about eating disorders can help reduce the stigma surrounding these illnesses and encourage individuals to seek help; and whereas the National Eating Disorders Association, NEDA, has designated the week of February 26th through March 1st, 2024, as National Eating Disorders Awareness Week. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council's staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the 26th of February through the 1st of March, 2024, as National Eating Disorders Awareness Week. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council's staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the 26th of February through the 1st of March, 2024, as National Eating Disorders Awareness Week. You can come on up. Give her a hand.
Our second proclamation is Dubuque's Read Across America Day.
One of our favorite days of the year. Beth, come on up.
Good evening. I'm Beth Magory, the Director of Donor Relations at St. Mark Youth and Richmond. My most favorite is new book. When Things Aren't Going Right, Go Left. One day, for no particular reason, nothing was going right. Absolutely nothing. Nothing was going right. So I decided to go left. The first thing I did was I left behind my worries. Yep, I left them right here on the ground. They looked at me and wondered, "Where are you going?" But I just smiled and waved goodbye. "Wait," they hollered. "Come back! What will happen to us?" I simply shrugged my shoulders and said, "You'll be fine." As I walked away, I thought, "Did I make the right choice? Should I go back and get them?" Doubts crept in. So you know what I did? I left behind my doubts. Yep, I left them right there on the ground. They bellowed, "You're making a mistake!" But I just gazed at the sky and they questioned, "Are you sure you're making the right decision?" "Absolutely," I declared. With my worries and doubts left behind, I could finally think clearly. I forged on until I came up to a pool and a diving board I remembered all too well. The last time I tried to dive off that diving board, I splattered on my back. I remembered the pain and how scared I was. I started thinking, "Maybe I shouldn't do this again." So you know what I did? I left behind my fears. Yep, I left them right there on the ground. They screamed, "Don't do it!" I stood up straight, shoulders back, hands pressed above my head. "Stop," they cried, but I simply turned and gave them a wink. I leapt, splat, on my back once again. That stings. I thought to myself, "This is impossible. It can't be done." So you know what I did? I left behind my frustrations. Yep, I left them right there on the ground and they yelled, "You can't do it!" Again, I stood up straight, shoulders back, hands pressed above my head. They laughed. "Give up already!" I whispered to myself, "No way. Never." I leapt, feet together, toes pointed, legs straight. Perfect, I did it! I started to realize, the more left I went, the more right I felt. So you know what I did? Yep, I just kept going left. And before I knew it, everything was going right. As I walked home, I glanced at the ground and I noticed something that I did not expect. My frustrations were smaller, my fears were a lot quieter, my doubts a lot calmer, and my worries practically gone. So I decided to pick them back up. And you know what? They felt lighter now. And they weren't so hard to handle anymore. And I realized it was okay to have them with me so long as I kept an eye on them and make sure they didn't get too big, or too loud, or too overwhelming. But if they did, and I felt like nothing was going right again, then I'd simply go left. So when life's burdens start to feel too heavy, don't be afraid to put them down for a while. When I got this book the first day, I brought it to summer program and we were out hiking with the Boys and Girls Club, or not the Boys, the Boy Scouts, out on camp. And one of the girls was having a moment and, "Like Sid, I got a book for you. I've got the book for you." She was worried about the bugs. She was worried about the spiders and the snakes and all of the things that are out in this world. And on a day like today where things are heavy, we had a heavy session before walking in tonight and talking about our emotions in a way that are heavy, and reading can connect us to those things that our kids are so desperately needing right now. And whether it's really learning that I know what it feels like with the wind in my hair when they go down and fly on a zip line at Four Mounts, or they're riding their bike, reading opens the eyes for our children to see what they can have and what they should have in the future.
Beth, thank you as always for joining us and sharing all this with us. And thank everyone at St. Mark Youth and Richmond for the work that you're doing in days like this, planning this and having opportunities to be able to read to the children in our community. So thank you for being here to accept this proclamation tonight. City Dubuque Proclamation: Whereas the residents of Dubuque, Iowa, stand firmly committed to promoting reading as the catalyst for our students' future academic success, their preparation for America's jobs of the future, and their ability to compete in a global economy; and whereas St. Mark Youth and Richmond has provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement in the education of our youth grounded in the principle that educational investment is key to the community's well-being and long-term quality of life; and whereas NEA's Read Across America, a national celebration of reading on March 2nd, 2024, promotes reading and adult involvement in the education of our community's students; and whereas the Dubuque City Council calls on the residents of Dubuque to assure that every child is in a safe place, reading together with a caring adult on March 2nd, 2024; and whereas this body enthusiastically endorses NEA's Read Across America and re-commits our community to engage in programs and activities to make America's children the best readers in the world. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council's staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the 2nd of March, 2024, as Dubuque's Read Across America Day.
We will move on to consent items. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration. And consent items can be found on pages 2 through 4 of the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. Do we have anyone here in chambers who would like to remove any of the consent items for separate discussion, please? Seeing no one here, do we have anyone virtually? Thank you.
And no input.
All right. Back to the desk then.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I'd like to pull aside number 8, please.
Okay.
I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the consent items as recommended except for number 8.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Resnick and a second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. On then to number 8, Mr. Resnick, please.
Thank you. Yes, this is, so what we're having here is the update on the Dubuque Brewing and Malting Building. And I just have a quick question. First of all, I was happy to see that the demolition schedule seems to be all wrapped up in two months, by April 12th. So that's a good, that's a good thing. I think they're moving right along. My question was, the first paragraph of the demolition plan says the Zinser Company plans to demolish the structure formerly known as Dubuque Brewing and Malting Company. And I'm just wondering, do they still plan to do just a portion of the building? Or I can, I can't tell from this that, have they changed it to demolishing the entire structure?
So Housing and Community Development Director Alexis Steger is on virtually, so...
Yes, good evening. This is Alexis Steger, Housing and Community Development Director. They are still looking to just demolish the 3,000 Jackson side. The 34 Jackson, 30-40 Jackson side would still remain.
Great, thank you very much. Do you have any other comments? It seems to be going well.
Yeah, it does. Today, we did receive an update again from the owner that a project manager is going to be on-site to work with Alliance. There is some electrical going to the building that also feeds the currently occupied space of Prairie Farms. So they're going to need to re-energize in a different space, basically, to keep that electricity going. They're working on that plan now. It's just a part of that demolition plan. So we don't think there's any delays yet, but we do have to wait and see what Alliance says to keep that moving.
Thank you. Well, that answers my question, Mr. Mayor. Others may want to comment before I make another motion.
Do we have any other questions or discussion on this item? Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Hmm?
I move that we receive and file number 8 on the consent agenda.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Resnick and a second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
We will move on to boards and commissions. We have appointments for the Community Development Advisory Commission and the Transit Advisory Board.
All right. So our first one is the Community Development Advisory Commission. It's one three-year term through February 15th, 2027, and we have one applicant, so I'll entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to reappoint Jerry Hamel, Jr., to the three-year term on the Community Development Advisor Commission.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Gerald Hamel is reappointed to the Community Development Advisory Commission. Next up is the Transit Advisory Board. We have one three-year term through July 30th, 2026, and one applicant, Dora Serna. So I'll entertain a motion here, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to appoint Dora Serna to the Transit Advisory Board.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Rousell and a second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
We will move on to boards and commissions. We have appointments for the Community Development Advisory Commission and the Transit Advisory Board.
All right. So our first one is the Community Development Advisory Commission. It's one three-year term through February 15th, 2027, and we have one applicant, so I'll entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to reappoint Jerry Hamel, Jr., to the three-year term on the Community Development Advisor Commission.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Gerald Hamel is reappointed to the Community Development Advisory Commission. Next up is the Transit Advisory Board. We have one three-year term through July 30th, 2026, and one applicant, Dora Serna. So I'll entertain a motion here, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to appoint Dora Serna to the Transit Advisory Board.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Rousell and a second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
We will move on to public hearings. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input for the public hearing you would like to speak to and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function and state your question, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Public hearing number one is request to rezone 1646 Asbury Road.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the communications and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. Wally, please.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Wally Wernmuth, Planning Services Director. The request before you tonight is to rezone the property located at the Doghouse from C2 Neighborhood Shopping Center to C3 General Commercial. The Zoning Advisory Commission held a public hearing on February 7th, and at that public hearing, Dusty Rogers, the owner of the Doghouse, came before the commission and explained that he would like to expand his bar business into the back portion where the Donut Boy used to be located. So there was an area located at the rear that was all their baking equipment. They requested to remove the wall and be able to put more table games, pools, pool games, and billiards into that space. However, a bar tavern is a legal non-conforming use in a C2 district, and in order to expand the business, they have to rezone it to a zoning district that would permit it, and that would be a C3 general commercial district. And at the meeting, we had discussions with regards to property owners who were notified. We notified everyone within 200 feet of the property. They talked about the longstanding location of a bar at that, at that location for over 50 years. And then we talked about if we received any public input. Ken Cook owns a property across the street, contacted me specifically. We had a conversation. I once explained to him that they're just expanding the existing bar restaurant into the space and not actually expanding the footprint. So the footprint of the building will not, will not be expanded. Another question got brought up is the roundabout discussion at the location. Is expanding of this business going to have an impact on the roundabout? There is a building perimeteratorium, and there is a discussion about a substantial improvement to the property. Planning staff and engineering staff both visited the site, went over the plans with Dusty Rogers, and based on the, just the reconfiguration of the space and the fact they aren't expanding the building or making a considerable expansion to the property, they felt that that did not meet to that, that threshold of a substantial improvement to the property. So at that meeting, the Zoning Advisory Commission discussed the request. They felt it was appropriate, and they, by a vote of 6 to 0, they recommend the City Council approve the request. A simple majority vote is needed for the City Council to approve the request. That's all I have unless you guys have any questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Wally. We are in a public hearing to consider a request from Dusty Rogers to rezone property located at 1646 Asbury Road from C2 Neighborhood Shopping Center to C3 General Commercial, and the Zoning Advisory Commission is recommending approval. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item tonight? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
No.
Thank you.
And no input.
All right. Back to the table for discussion, please. Yeah, Ms. Farber.
So, Wally, I'm in that neighborhood. As you know, I also have a commercial establishment in that neighborhood, and I welcome the expansion. I do have a question about parking. With the added expansion and with more seats.
Yes.
As it's determined for parking, will they have enough off-street parking once the roundabout is there and currently as they develop?
Yeah, exactly. So that's something we definitely looked at. We wanted to make sure that. So there is a current gravel portion of parking that's actually city-owned lots. And, but Dusty Rogers, the property owner, actually owns all the parking lots, the paid parking lots and the properties next door. They're created as a full zoning lot. So we specifically looked at calculating the parking requirement to make sure they had the required amount of off-street parking in case those, those two lots are going to go away, or if there's anything left over, they have the required amount of parking with their existing paving for this expansion.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick. Thank you. So would you say, Mr. Wernmuth, that it, this change doubles the size, adds 50% more, 30% more? How does this affect the actual size of the...
It doesn't overall double the size. What it does is it creates, so if you've ever been in the space, it's...
I've been to Donut Boy.
Okay, the Donut Boy, yeah. So you know the Donut Boy space is kind of small when you walk in the entryway, but there's this whole addition up the back of the building. So currently, right now, if you were to go in the, to the Doghouse, you know, they have pool tables and dartboards and tables for food preparation and everything, and everyone's really on top of each other. So it's extremely clustered. So what they're looking at doing, the space will be expanded. It's not greater than 50%, but it's allowing them to move those pool tables and those dartboards to allow people to be not on top of each other. So when we did look at the parking requirement and just make sure they're still going to meet that demand, they're still going to meet that demand for those requirements. So to basically answer your question, it's not greater than 50%.
All right, thank you. And were the neighbors living within 200 feet alerted to the change?
Yes. We do notify everyone within 200 feet of the property. So, and, but we did not receive any input. We send physically a mail letter to each individual. There is quite a topography change from the neighbors that are located to the east of the property. It's almost a 20-foot elevation change going down there. Across the street, you know, you have the gas station, you have Beechers Ice Cream and some of the other businesses for that. It's, and that whole intersection has really changed. The sheer amount of vehicles driving at that, going by the storefront of that, and then, as you know, over the, over the years, you know, the intensification of some of those uses are changing as we grow as a city, so.
Thank you. I've been to Beechers as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Resnick. Any other questions or discussion here?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Jones, go ahead.
I don't have data on this, but my recollection is that that's a pretty well-run establishment that doesn't have a lot of trouble spilling out in the streets. Their renewals are never controversial. All their police reports are minimal or nonexistent, and this, this frankly makes the bar environment a little safer if you get people a little bit more spread out. It looks like they accidentally knock over a beer with a pool cue and start something. So I certainly support this. This is just smart growth.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Yeah, Ms. Wethel.
Is there anything in the zoning ordinance that would allow us to make sure they continue to make the donuts that Donut Boy made?
I am sorry, is there going to be donuts? Are you going to make donuts now or something like that? No, unfortunately.
Thank you for the work on this, though, Wally. I know it took probably quite a bit of your staff hours to get it done.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
This discussion is flying right off the rails here, guys. Just want you to know.
Beer, donuts.
Going to have to really get, really have to buckle down on my job up here. All right, well, thank you very much for the discussion. And Wally, you know, in all seriousness, I do want to, I was going to mention this anyway, but I, because I want to point it out every once in a while. I still appreciate all the information you give to us on these items. You know, between what you give us from staff and then what we receive from the Zoning Advisory Commission, and then the fact that the minutes from the Zoning Advisory Commission are always attached on the days that we see these same things, reading all of that tells us such a full story by the time we walk in the door. So I hope that people recognize that because it's helpful when, you know, if you want to come as a member of the public to come and talk about this, it's helpful to see all that information because it's right there to talk about so many of these things. And then there's always a few questions, you know, on top of that after we come here, but I think it's just, it makes it, it's such a professional process, and I really appreciate all the information that we get because it really makes our job very well-informed by the time we get in here. So thank you for that. And I know you're here with us for another item. I just wanted to mention it on the first ones.
Hey, I'll take...
Whatever praise you can get, huh? Well, thank you. All right, so nothing else on this one. Our motion here is to receive and file and waive the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0.
Public hearing number two is request to rezone property on Airborne Road.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file, and a further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Rousell and a second by Farber. Back to you, Wally.
Yeah, so once again, Planning Services Manager, or Planning Services Director. The request before you tonight is in regards to the Dubuque Metropolitan Area Solid Waste Agency. They're looking at making some improvements to their site. The Zoning Advisory Commission held a public hearing on February 7th, and at that meeting, Ken Miller of DMASWA spoke on behalf of the application. He explained that they're seeking to rezone the property from the agricultural use to heavy industrial to conduct those activities on the property that's similar to what is going on with landfill. But really, the emphasis to this whole thing is regards to a small residential pickup-drop-off area. We have a site plan that's been submitted in which the residents will be able to go in, drop off at this facility, and dumpsters, and not have to carry on all the way through the landfill to go up to the larger dump sites. And because it's being operated in a different location, the property's zoned ag, they have to look at rezoning it to HI heavy industrial. There's an existing gas plant there, and that was permitted as a quasi-judicial public utility. So this property is actually, will be rezoned as well to the heavy industrial type use. This area actually is bifurcated or divided by the airborne drive, so there's some land on the other side between Highway 20 and airborne drive that's part of this property. When that was platted, the roadway came through, and it's actually one lot, even though when you look at it, it's like two separate parcels, or two separate pieces of land for that area. So the, as I mentioned before, the Zoning Advisory Commission held a public hearing. We notified everyone within 200 feet of the request. No one spoke in opposition at the meeting. And by a vote of 7 to 0, the Zoning Advisory Commission recommends the City Council approve the request as submitted, and a simple majority vote is needed for City Council to approve the request.
Thank you very much, Wally. Well, we are in a public hearing to consider a request from Ken Miller, Kenneth Miller, Dubuque Metropolitan Area Solid Waste Agency to rezone property on Airborne Road from AG Agricultural to HI Heavy Industrial, and the Zoning Advisory Commission is recommending approval. Do we have anyone here to address us on this item this evening? Do we have anyone here to address us on this item this evening?
Kenneth Miller, Solid Waste Agency Administrator for DMASWA, and I'm just here to answer any questions you may have, so.
Thank you very much, Kenneth. Anyone else to address us here in chambers? Do we have anyone virtually?
No.
All right.
And no input.
Okay, back to the table then for discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
This this is an exciting and long-time coming project. I've been on the Solid Waste Agency Board for 19 years, or this is my 19th year. My predecessor, Dan Nicholson, and congratulations, Dan, you finally got it done, buddy, pushed for this project way back then, and various challenges with with the growth and evolution of the West End and the landfill have stood in the way, not the least of which was not knowing how our footprint was going to look with the highway changes that occurred out there most recently. So now with the new entrance done, and with decades of planning for this thing, it's going to happen, so it'll completely change the experience for the landfill customer. They'll come in, their safety is going to be dramatically improved, they'll be in and out quicker, and this little service facility will give Joe Garbage Hauler, Joe Saturday Hauler, the opportunity to take that piece of metal and throw it over here instead of putting it in the landfill and to do last-minute recycling. So it's it's just, we're also going to have the hazardous waste facility up close, so there's no driving down the big dirty hill, no slipping and sliding around, no exposure to the heavy trucks that sometimes tip over when they're dumping down the muck. Everything about this is better for the customer, and it's it's on the landfill property, been a landfill property forever and a day, so it really doesn't disrupt anything, it just makes things better. So way to go, Kenny, we got her done. One step close. Yeah, this is built yet, I guess.
Nothing's being built tomorrow, we're just rezoning tomorrow. Mr. Resnick, go ahead.
Thank you. And so I was hoping that, Mr. Miller, you'd be able to give the citizens a kind of a broad timeline about when these changes that Mr. Jones talked about, when are they going to be occurring? Will they be here by next year, maybe?
So our our current hope is we're at 30% design right now, so we'll be going over final changes with HGR this week with the goal to move it to 90% design on the next month, and then hopefully get the project out to bid and or to approve to release it for bid in March or April with award in May, June. We're probably looking at a late summer, early fall 2025 timeline for the facility to actually open. And this facility, as Mr. Jones said, will serve about 52% of the vehicles that come to the landfill would go to utilize this facility. They only represent about 7% of the actual tonnage, but it's 52% of the traffic. So separating that will create a better experience, not only for the small loads customers, but also for the large volume haulers, too, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any others? Well, that is exciting to see this moving forward in that way at 2025. That's right around the corner here, so thank you very much for all the information. So the motion before us here is to receive and file and waive the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Russell and a second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Seven zero.
Public hearing number three is resolution of adoption for the amendment of the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District Urban Renewal Plan, version 2024.1.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Resnick and a second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending City Council adopt the attached resolution of adoption for the amended and restated urban renewal plan for Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District, version 2024.1. The proposed amended and restated urban renewal plan for the district would expand the district to include property to be designated as a new subarea U to support the city performing the public obligations related to the quick-trip development. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request Mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider City Council adopt the attached resolution of adoption for amended and restated urban renewal plan for Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District, version 2024.1. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
No. No input.
All right, back to the table then, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Motion is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number four is resolution of adoption for the amendment of the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District Urban Renewal Plan, version 2024.2.
Mr. Mayor. I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Resnick and a second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending City Council adopt the attached resolution of adoption for the amended and restated urban renewal plan for the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District, version 2024.2. The proposed amended and restated urban renewal plan for the district would expand the district to include the property to be designated as a new subarea V, as referenced in a first amendment to development agreement with Seipo Warehouse LLC. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request Mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider City Council adopt the attached resolution of adoption for the amended and restated urban renewal plan for Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District, version 2024.2. Does anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one, anyone virtually?
No.
Thank you.
No input.
Thank you. Back to the table then for any discussion. Seeing none. Motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Public hearing number five is public hearing and approval of amended urban revitalization plans.
Mr. Mayor.
Wethel.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
There are actually multiple resolutions.
Multiple resolutions.
So you can just say resolutions.
Resolutions.
Bingo.
Plural.
Second.
We've got a motion by Wethel, second by Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Housing and Community Development Director Alexis Steger is recommending City Council adopt a public hearing regarding the proposed urban revitalization plans for the following five districts, Alta Vista, Bee's Drive, Plaza Drive, Radford Road, and Dubuque, and approve the amended urban revitalization plans as provided. In October 2022, the City Council approved housing incentives, such as the designation of urban revitalization districts, to increase the number of housing units in the city. The city is projected to have a housing shortage of over 1,100 units unless the rate of new housing development significantly increases. The incentives approved by the City Council aim to increase the number of available housing units to decrease this shortage. In 2023, Iowa legislation changed Iowa Code Chapter 404 after the adoption of the urban revitalization plans for the city of Dubuque. The changes no longer allow for abatement of all property taxes imposed and instead requires the school tax portion to be paid on the entire value of the property. This change decreases the amount of benefit for developers by approximately 40%. The change is in effect for all improvements made in urban revitalization districts starting January 1st, 2024. These amendments will add an abatement schedule that allows for 85% tax abatement for up to 10 years for new market-rate housing developments instead of the previous descending abatement schedule, and will update the language of the plan to conform with legislative changes to Chapter 404. To ensure developers in the urban revitalization area can receive the same amount of tax abatement as they could prior to the legislative change, the city is proposing these changes. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request Mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider City Council approve the amended urban revitalization plans for the following districts, Alta Vista, Bee's Drive, Plaza Drive, Radford Road, and Dubuque. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
No.
Thank you.
No input.
All right, back to the table then for any discussion. Well, I'd just like to say I appreciate the creative work here and innovative work by staff, given the fact that this was kind of a complication thrown at us by the Iowa Legislature. It's an unfortunate one. We had to to make some of these changes, but at the same time, appreciate the fact that we're trying to problem-solve as best we can here so that we can continue with housing development in the way that we really want to in the city. With that said, the motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolutions. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
We will move on to public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the City Council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the City Council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the City Council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to the action items on the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. Do we have any public input this evening? I see nobody here. Anyone virtually? Okay, anything from the City Clerk's office?
No input.
All right. Seeing no public input, we can move on to action items.
Action item number one is National Mississippi River Museum and Aquarium 20th Anniversary Update.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and view the presentation.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Resnick and a second by Wethel. And I believe I'm going to turn it right over to Kurt Strand, so come on up, Kurt.
I think Wally raised this up a little bit.
Yeah, that usually happens when Wally comes to talk to us for a little bit, so. Um, yeah, you got it there, okay.
There we go. He did that intentionally. So thank you for the time. I do have a video that we're going to show in a little bit. Is that prepared, ready to go?
I think Eric will. Eric, yep, the voice in the sky says we're ready in the back room.
I will, I will let you know when, it's coming up. So thank you so much for the time. As you know, we've celebrated our 20th anniversary of the National Mississippi River Museum and Aquarium. And you may not know that we've had visitors from 50 states, 70 countries, and welcomed over 3.5 million guests since the day we opened up that door. So we made a tremendous impact on our community. The Arts and Economic Prosperity VI National Economic Impact Study, which recently occurred, indicated that the River Museum provides $16 million in economic impact annually. So just to let you know, we really appreciate being in the community, and we feel that we're giving back to the community. And I want to just go over a couple of ways that we're actually changing our organization to be even more welcoming. So for example, we offer many programs, including greatly reduced admissions, discounts, scholarships to the residents of the city of Dubuque and to those outside of Dubuque. We've added numerous accessibility programs, updated our facilities to be better for those guests, and partnered with different parts of our community, including the Marshall East Community. So right now, I'd like to show a brief video that we created for our gala event, the Captain's Ball this November, because I think it does a really nice job of talking to some people in the community about what we do.
Thank you, Kurt.
As we celebrate our 20th anniversary year as the National Mississippi River Museum and Aquarium, it's an opportunity to look back on all we've accomplished in that time. We're here because a group of passionate citizens had a vision for a world-class museum here in Dubuque on the banks of the Mississippi River. It's through your support that we've welcomed 3.5 million visitors to campus in 20 years, and it's with your support that we can make this a one-of-a-kind facility, not just to tourists from all over, but to our own community.
I feel very popular, kind of like Bruce Willis and also like Michael Jackson.
Because you go to the River Museum camp?
Yeah.
Okay. We get the texts from the school district every Friday, and so like he is a goer, so I like to keep him busy. So I just was looking to see what it was, and they they had the summer camps listed in there. And when I went and looked into it further, it said, you know, for financial assistance.
I found out about the campus, I was just like, oh! Let's go there.
Since we discovered it, he's every year ended the school year, am I going to go to the River Museum campus here? I hope so, yes. I know I wouldn't be able to send him because of our financial situation, and I don't know, I would feel really bad having to tell him, no, you can't go. So everything that that everybody does as far as the donations and the scholarships is is definitely appreciated.
I get excited when the kids get excited, and that's one of the reasons that I love working in education.
Through your support last year, we were able to provide 29 summer camp scholarships to students like Thomas, as well as programming at Title I elementary schools and St. Mark Youth Enrichment. We even offered programming at the Dubuque Summer Academy, providing youth in our community a way to engage with science and conservation hands-on the way only the National Mississippi River Museum and Aquarium can.
My favorite part about working with youth is letting them experience nature in all of its glory without any kind of restrictions. We took a group of teens with the Multicultural Family Center out on the river with our big river canoes. And some of these kids, this was their very first time on the Mississippi River. They've grown up next to it their entire lives, but this was their first time actually on it. We were able to get them out on the river and stop at a sandbar, and these boys were able to go into the river and find live mussels. I still think about it, and it makes me smile every time I think about it because his, their face just lit up and like, wow, I'm holding it, and it was amazing.
We want each member of this community to see the museum and aquarium as theirs, a place that is accessible to them, affordable to them, to feel a part of our work and our mission to bring rivers and history to life.
The museum and aquarium has a really unique opportunity to engage with a wide variety of audiences, from schoolchildren to consumers at different disability, accessibility facilities to come and and volunteer or just to visit for free through our Museums for All program. The best way to describe being an accessible facility is using a little bit of an analogy that I really like of equality versus equity. Equality is giving everybody a shoe. Equity is giving everyone a shoe that fits. And I think that in making these important changes to our visitor experience, to the physicality of our campus, and just better accommodating people overall, we're able to give everyone that shoe that fits them and give them the experience that will be meaningful and a long-lasting memory. We're able to conduct programming at places such as St. Mark Youth Enrichment to both reach out to them where they're at, but also to welcome them into our campus by field trip.
Did you have a great time today at the River Museum? Yeah.
I think that that's really special and really inspiring when we're able to see the wide variety of people that that come to see us and know that we've made it possible for them to be here.
With your support, kids in our community like Thomas can continue to attend camp, and parents like Jamie will continue to receive the support they need. and parents like Jamie will continue to receive the support they need.
With your support, those served at St. Mark Youth Enrichment, Hills and Dales, Area Residential Care, and other human and social service organizations will receive access to campus and outreach programming.
With your help, more is possible.
With your help, more is possible.
With your support, more is possible.
So, I get a kick out of that for a lot of reasons. Mostly, the people who come and enjoy, and it's such a wide range of visitors that we have, I'm just really proud of our organization. Uh, for example, Museums for All, that's this program that we started about three years ago, and it does give free or very, very low-cost admission to those who are on a SNAP benefits card, Medicaid card, Museums for All card, provided by Hawkeye Area Community Action Program, City of Dubuque individuals utilizing low-income home energy assistance programs, Housing Choice voucher, uh, program, Section 8. So, we reach a lot of people. When I say a lot of people, in 2023, there were 4,605 city residents that came to the River Museum for either free or one, two, or $3 payment. That's, you know, 10% of what typical people would pay. We also had 4,444, believe it or not, that's the number, of Dubuque County and those outside Dubuque County residents. So, over 9,000 people visited us for really low cost or no cost. Uh, and that would have been about $150,000 for us as an organization. It was funded by Dubuque County McDonough Foundation, and of course, us as an organization, because we really want to be as welcoming as possible. As I mentioned, the summer scholarships, we raised about $30,000 of that from individuals and corporations. And that provided many, many students, uh, the opportunity to attend our camps. And that's, again, one of those really just interesting, great, uh, inclusive moments that we, we do. And then, uh, Cody Munch, uh, mentioned the Multicultural Family Center. One of the things is, some of the kids had actually never stepped in the Mississippi River. So, they got to do it on our boats. And those boats were donated to us by, um, Dimensional Brewing and Dark Bird. So, you see this generous, great partners we have all around the, the area here. Uh, real quickly, uh, Great Plains ADA came to our campus and they did a complete assessment of our campus, because we're really working hard to be accessible, inclusive, and an equitable organization. That plan that they generated for us has changed us in many, many ways. We now offer accessibility programs. We have sensory days, sensory kits that we give out to guests that need them, uh, audio description hours for low-vision, blind guests, where our educators may be standing out, talking about the exhibit to help them experience that, uh, like they, they may in the past or could have in the past. We worked with the Chief Equity Officer at the city, and now our campus maps and our welcome statement have been translated into Spanish. And, uh, the Marshall East Community, one of their craftsmen built an outrigger for us. So, if you go into our Rivers to the Sea exhibit, you will see we tell the Marshall East community's story, why they came to Dubuque, how that they can give their story, continue on their culture for their families and for their, uh, you know, there are tons of families here in the Marshall East community. And, uh, they have been just wonderful partners for us, too. And then, then one other thing, we created a comfort room. So, we have, uh, DEA I team at the River Museum, and they recommended we create a comfort rooms for those that have sensory needs, whether they need a quiet place, or perhaps a mother who needs to have some private time with a young child and things like that. And that was in the paper here. The Association of Zoos and Aquariums picked it up, put it in the National Magazine, sent it to all of our peers. So, that was really cool. We're getting great attention. Uh, and the other thing that we've added lately based on feedback is homeschool days, where we do homeschool programs. The students that come for our homeschool days are the exact same experience that Dubuque Community Schools, or Holy Family, or Western Dubuque, those students would come. And we charge them the same as if they're coming on a field trip through the school to provide them with curriculum that connects back with the lessons that they teach every day. So, that has been a great thing. The difference is that our educators had to learn to deal with a third grader and a 11th grader, because they travel as families, they don't travel in different groups. So, scaling education needs gets a little difficult, but it's actually been incredibly rewarding. So, the last thing, just to tell you about, because we, as you can tell, proud of this organization, proud of this community, and equity, accessibility, inclusion is very important. We are, uh, soon to be certified by Culture City, K-U-L-T-U-R-E, culture with a K. It's a nonprofit, recognized nationwide organization that certifies organizations, venues, and businesses, most recently the Super Bowl LVIII. We will be the first organization certified in Dubuque, the 11th in the state of Iowa. These resources that our staff are being trained on, and our first training was last Friday, will be available for our guests' spring break. So, we are really working hard to give our guests an opportunity to come and enjoy our campus with independence, with equity, with respect. And so, if you want to learn anymore about these programs, believe it or not, I love giving tours. So does my team. They love giving tours. If you'd want to see some of these equity things we've added, includes some inclusion, uh, accessibility, we've changed exhibits, et cetera, we'd be happy to give a tour. And finally, I would also want to say that we appreciate the partnerships we have with the City of Dubuque, and that, uh, if there's any additional ideas you have to help us improve the guest experience and be more accessible and equitable, we are all ears. So, come and see us sometime. And thank you very much. It's, uh, great to celebrate our 20th anniversary.
Well, Kurt, thank you very much for being here to, to share with us everything that's happened in those 20 years, and especially what's happening now. So, open it up for any questions or discussion from anyone. You nailed it. Yeah. You want to go, Mr. Jones?
It's pretty hard not to get excited when, when you bring your exciting team here and, and, you know, your, your enthusiasm rubs off on us a little bit here, too. That's, that's wonderful. So, congratulations on this. What a, what a great reach.
Thank you. Yeah. It's hard to not have fun there, so.
Mr. Resnick.
To point out, you probably know this, that, uh, that, uh, National Mississippi River Muse- uh, Museum and Aquarium is a point of pride for all our citizens. They, they love coming down there when they can, and they always point it out to people coming in. Uh, this is one of those great things about Dubuque. So, congratulations. I'm glad you're building on diversity, equity, inclusion. Uh, there's so much, and it really helps everybody. Yes, it helps specific groups, but that kind of feeling of, we're glad you're here, and anything we can do to help you, uh, enjoy and get more out of this experience, everybody gets that from, uh, from your efforts. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Wethel.
I want to thank you, of course, for all that you do, but your partnerships that you participate in as an organization, and I know your staff works, um, really hard at. So, not just the Multicultural Family Center, but even maybe future partnerships with Schmidt Island and other, other opportunities in our community to branch out and, and serve more people. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
So, I want to thank you for the quote on equity and equality, uh, because I think when you said equity is you give everybody a shoe, but equality is to make sure that the shoe fits. Um, I think that is really something for us to note, uh, and thank you for sharing that with us, because I think that's very important, uh, for whatever we do and when we do it, and especially for your inclusion and your diversity activities that you're doing. So, kudos for that. And I also wanted to give you a shout out for your campaign, More is Possible. So, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Ms. Jones.
Just add one other thing. As, as you know, I was on the American Queen last summer and stopped at Dubuque, took the tour. It was great. Um, but back on the boat, people were coming back from their city tours and things, and there was a lot of buzz about what they'd seen. And, uh, the folks were out at Field of Dreams, they were all excited, and heard a guy say, oh, yeah? Should see that museum right over there. That was cool.
That's great. You know, I, I heard you refer to diversity, equity, accessibility, and inclusion. You have a DEA I team at the museum, you said.
Right.
That, I mean, that's just an incredible example to set for other, other organizations in the community and for the community at large. It's just an incredible example.
Well, learning from that ADA group was really striking, because they brought a wide range of people with them, and somebody in a wheelchair maybe couldn't get close enough to an exhibit. So, now, we made some shifts. Some of them couldn't read the signage, level, and other things. So, we learned a ton from that group. They were actually, we had about 30 of them there today to tour, to see the changes we've made on our property.
Wow. Wow, that's great. And congratulations on the certification, uh, that goes along with that.
Thanks.
You, you really are setting a great example. And just such a, you know, there's a lot of great comments here. Just such an incredible asset for a community like ours. I mean, for the City of Dubuque to have the National Mississippi River Museum and Aquarium, it still kind of boggles my mind sometimes, honestly. And, you know, I told this story once when I was at an event of yours, but, um, you know, it's a big reason why I returned to Dubuque personally. Uh, you know, when I, I was, I like to joke, but I'm actually pretty serious when I say when I, when I left, Dubuque became cool, because it was not the greatest place that I wanted to live when I was, you know, 18, 19, 20 years old and, and looking for other things to do. But when I, I came back after Dubuque discovered the river. I mean, after you, after we all discovered that we lived right next door to an international treasure, and the fact that you showcased that. And then, I, I couldn't help but notice, um, I think it was Ms. Wethel here that, that mentioned Chaplain Schmidt Island. I couldn't help but notice that on your video. We had a long discussion about Chaplain Schmidt Island last week and some of the things that, you know, that's been on our goals and priorities for a long time as a, as a council and as a community. We're really pushing to have a greater connection with that island and the river that it sits in. And for people to be, be able to access that river in ways that have been very limited for most people for a long time, that's a really important part of rediscovering that river here in Dubuque. I mean, we have to make sure that people can put their hands in it and be in the river and be a part of that. And that story that was told there was a really moving one for that reason. Uh, and to watch, um, boats being launched from Chaplain Schmidt Island, that's a, a big part of what I think we've been talking about here. So, it's all, it's all very connected, everybody working together to be able to get all this done. And I sincerely appreciate the work that you have all done for the last 20 years and everybody who's been involved with it. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
With that, motion here was to receive and file and hear that great presentation. So, Adrian, if you would, call the roll, please.
Farber.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion, pass at seven zero.
Action item number two is Approval of English Ridge Park Concept Plan.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Wethel.
I move to receive and file and approve.
Second.
Motion by Wethel, second by Resnick. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan, Leisure Services Director Marie Ware is recommending city council approval of the English Ridge Park Concept Plan. The project budget for all consultant services, construction, and project costs for this park is $214,000 using American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funds. The ARPA funding source requires the funding to be committed by December 31st, 2024. This means we need to have a construction contract fully in place and executed by that time. The Parks and Recreation Commission at their February 13th, 2024 meeting reviewed the concept and unanimously recommended city council approval. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? I know we talked at length about a couple of other parks last week. This is another one that was there, and I appreciate the Parks and Recreation Commission taking a look at this at a separate meeting, and of course, all the work that's been done on it by staff and neighbors. With that said, motion here is to receive and file and approve the concept plan. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye. Motion, pass at seven zero.
Action item number three is RAISE Infrastructure Implementation Grant, Building Bridges to Employment and Equity Project, Approved Grant Application Submission.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second.
And a motion by Farber, second by Jones. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan, Assistant City Engineer Bob Schissel, and Director of Strategic Partnerships Terry Goodman are recommending city council adopt the attached resolution authorizing the filing of the application with the U.S. Department of Transportation for a RAISE Infrastructure Implementation Grant. And RAISE stands for Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity to assist with funding for proposed improvements to construct specific elements of the Building Bridges to Employment and Equity Project. The RAISE Infrastructure Implementation Grant application for the 14th Street Railroad Overpass and related improvements is due February 28th, 2024. The RAISE grant application covers several, several city council priorities, including RAISE grant and matching funds for construction and Central Avenue Corridor Revitalization Plan by connecting Central Avenue to traffic from Wisconsin, the riverfront bike trails, the Kerford Boulevard Industrial Park, and the reinvestment plans for Schmidt Island. This project also meets the city council priority of leveraging federal and state infrastructure grant programs and street maintenance and rehabilitation program, thereby directly addressing four of the 10 city council priorities. The city was awarded a $2.28 million USDOT RAISE Infrastructure Planning Grant last year, which is providing for the planning and design of a multimodal transportation corridor project for proposed improvements to the Elm Street Corridor, the 16th Street Corridor, the Kerper Boulevard Corridor, Chaplain Schmidt Island Corridor, and the proposed 14th Street Railroad Vehicular and Pedestrian Overpass Bridge Project. The multimodal transportation corridors will connect vulnerable neighborhoods and low-income residents with economic opportunities, recreational amenities, and key community resources in the Kerper Boulevard Industrial Park on Chaplain Schmidt Island, in downtown Dubuque and its historic millwork district, and on the west side of the city via the Downtown Intermodal Transportation Center. In particular, the RAISE Infrastructure Planning Grant is being used for planning and design of physical connections that will directly benefit low-income residents in areas of persistent poverty, namely the Census Track Number One and Census Track Number Five, by providing significant safety improvements while connecting them to economic opportunities such as the Kerper Boulevard Industrial Park and the Chaplain Schmidt Island and key community assets. The project will also focus on multimodal transportation corridors with complete streets improvements along Elm Street and Six Street, 16th Street corridors. The project would also include the design of an improved pedestrian bike shared use path adjacent to the existing 16th Street Piazza Channel Bridge to Chaplain Schmidt Island, and incorporating a multilane roundabout at Admiral Sheehy Drive and Greyhound Park intersection on Chaplain Schmidt Island. The impending increase in train traffic due to the merger of the Canadian Pacific and Kansas City Southern Railroads will negatively impact our region. The merger is projected to double the number of trains passing daily through the downtown urban core of the city from nine trains to 18 trains by 2027. This surge in train activity will lead to significant delays at 10 existing at-grade railroad crossings and will hinder the efficient movement of people and goods, significantly impacting vulnerable neighborhoods, emergency response, and key employment centers. The project costs for purposes of this grant application are $38,720,000. The maximum RAISE grant award is $25 million with no local match requirements. The city needed to prioritize the project elements, putting some elements into future phases, and identify additional funding sources. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, this is Danny.
Yeah, Mr. Sprank, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Um, I fully support us moving forward on this. The fact that this is a massive game changer, my biggest concerns is the amount of train traffic. Well, that's going to seriously impede and affect everybody, particularly in the north end and downtown. So, I, I fully support us, uh, supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sprank. Well, and, all right, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Resnick.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do, do want to say that there was a, a very good extensive article in the newspaper, and I want to thank Professor Schissel for, for all the quotes and accurate information for our citizens. So, um, there's a lot going on, as Mr. Van Milligan just, um, uh, talked about a little bit in his, in his memo. So, there's a lot going on, and we're doing a lot, uh, we're, we're also, am I right, Mr. Van Milligan, trying to improve the, uh, the crossings, and we're also trying to get some quiet zones. We're doing other things to mitigate some of the excessive railroad, uh, tracked, uh, traffic as well, correct?
Uh, yes. Uh, as a separate project, not as part of the RAISE grant, we are, uh, currently examining the feasibility of, uh, creating a quiet zone through our community. And what that would mean is that the, uh, trains would not have to blow their whistle at each crossing. Now, it's a very expensive endeavor, because there's certain requirements by the federal government improvement you have to make to each of the crossings, uh, or close, close some, uh, so that you don't have to have the train whistle. But we are working with, uh, the Central Intergovernmental Association, DMATS, on a study to help us determine how we could, uh, create that quiet zone.
Thank you. So, there's a lot of moving parts on this, and, uh, we really appreciate this, and we all hope that we get the maximum, of course. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Ms. Wethel, go ahead. Mr. Jones.
Um, I just wanted to mention, I, I drove down to the crossings that we're speaking about tonight, and just the fear I have about the danger of those areas, and specifically as it relates to children in the neighborhood, and, um, looking out for not just this program, but I think as a council in the future, looking at what we can do for endorsing those safe railroad crossings, the work through DMATS and ECIA. I'm really proud of those collaborations, but, um, there's more work to be done after this. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just adding on to that, um, what I think is very impressive in the design phase and hopefully in the, um, actual development phase, is that this will be a means for first responders as well to get quicker access to the different parts of the city that this will connect. And I think that is just a really important, uh, public safety and added value. So, thank you.
Mr. Jones. Oh, uh, go ahead. Yeah.
Terry Goodman, the Director of Strategic Partnerships, is on, uh, virtually, and she wanted to add something about the quiet zones, so is that all right?
Terry, go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much, um, Mr. Van Milligan. I wanted to just share with you that these other intersections, as was mentioned, are being studied by, um, Chandra Ravada and ECIA staff, and DMATS staff, and the city staff, engineering, and other staff, um, for potential funding later this year from CRISI grants. And these are state grants that are funded by the federal government, and they are due later in the year. So, this isn't the end of us addressing the, um, impact of the merger between the Canadian Pacific and the, um, Kansas City Southern. We continue to work, um, on those other opportunities to, to provide greater safety, um, for citizens and, and residents in the, on the north end and downtown.
Thank you, Terry. Mr. Jones.
Mr. Resnick pointed out that, uh, there was an extensive article in The Telegraph on it. I would, I want to give a shout out to Andy, who's doing a pretty good job of covering what's happened at this table, and that was an excellent, deep article. But he's also the copy editor full-time, um, so he's just kind of filling in here. And it seems, seems like the copy's looking okay, too. So, congratulations on both of that. Thank you for that article, because it's, this is a big deal, and it's hard to understand all the corners of it. Man, you did a great job with it.
It's good to have a local paper.
Yeah.
That's for sure. Any others?
Well, some great comments, some great discussion. In true go-getter form, we are already looking ahead, and I appreciate that. But I want to make sure I stress to the rest of the community, too, how important this grant is. There's a reason we made this its own goal and priority this year. This is a major, major project that, with a major opportunity and a source of funding through RACE grants. So I definitely want to thank, I mean, the fact that these grants came through the Biden administration, the bipartisan infrastructure law, really important to local governments like ours. I mean, really, really important to be able to have this type of funding, to do projects of this scale. It is, you know, we were lucky enough to welcome the Secretary of Transportation, Pete Buttigieg, to Dubuque to talk about this, and when we were standing there talking to him and explaining the project and picturing it, it was incredibly exciting to picture what this could really become in this part of town. It will be very, very different than anything we've been used to. I mean, we've been very used to crossing the railroad tracks when we're stopped somewhere on Third Street, or is it 36th, basically? I mean, that's where Fangler is, to be able to get across. You know, we need this badly. The city of Dubuque needs this badly. We've probably needed this for a while, but we definitely need it now. So I, and the other thing I want to point out, because I've known this because they've been, you know, they've been working really, really hard. Mike is the city manager, Corey, Terry Goodman, everybody who's involved in this across many departments within the staff have been working tirelessly on this grant and getting it ready for our submittal. And I just want to say thank you for all that work, because it's been a heavy lift, and I recognize that, and we recognize that. It's time to start crossing our fingers and making sure that, you know, we've done the work, we've talked to our federal partners with this, and really hopeful that they'll see this as a worthy project. It's a highly competitive grant, so we have to continue to do the high-quality work that we've been doing. But I'm hopeful. I feel really good about this, and I think that if we can get this done, then we can definitely move on to a lot of these other things that we need to work on in the area where the train tracks continue to run for lots of important purposes, but we still need to make sure that we are able to cross those trains when they're there.
Mr.?
Yeah, Mike, go ahead.
If you don't mind, I'd just like to point out two other things, and I'm glad you remind me about everybody working so hard on this. Two things there. So last year, you know, we were fortunate enough to get the planning grant for over $2 million, for the $4 million in planning, and that was assigned to Assistant City Engineer Bob Schissel. And normally, that's a two- to three-year process of doing all that planning and design and conceptual drawings and things like that. And Bob condensed it down to one year so we could get this grant application this year, because remember, these funds aren't going to be available forever. The other thing I would like to point out is, when we got that planning grant, we needed, that grant did require matching funds. This one doesn't. That one did, and the DRA stepped up and agreed that if we would issue some downtown tax increment financing debt as the match, that they would make the payments on the debt. So those are two really important components of all this.
Thanks for mentioning that, Mike. Appreciate it. I see Bob in the audience today, so Bob, thank you very much for your work on this. Two years down to a year, that's a big deal. All right. Well, with that, the motion here is to receive and file and adopt this resolution. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number four is Smart Parking and Mobility Management Plan: Parking Access Revenue Control System, Request to Distribute RFP and Create an RFP Review Committee.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and approve.
Second. Motion by Resnick, second by Jones. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan, Director of Transportation Services Ryan Nuckey, and Project Manager Steve Sampson-Brown are recommending city council approval to distribute request for proposals for services related to installation of a Parking Access Revenue Control System, or PARC, at six parking ramps in the Porte de Buke parking lot adjacent to the former McGraw-Hill building. PARC's equipment is more commonly known as gate equipment. Selecting a PARC's equipment vendor is the next needed step, working towards modernizing the city's parking system. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Ms. Farber.
So it's really a great opportunity that we have here for this PARC's system, and as the most people in Dubuque know, that it is very antiquated what we currently have, and it would be just great to have the new technology for the in and the out within these ramps, to know when they're being fully utilized versus when there's vacancies, and also for the mobility, if you will, to use it for multi-functions. And so to use it in the evening different than during the day, and just to have access to how many parking spaces are available. And I noted that we have almost 3,000. We have about 2,900 plus currently, and it would be just great to see that optimized, and hopefully, number one, have alternatives and opportunities for folks to park that they don't have now, and then also to help it become self-sufficient over time as well. So, thank you.
Mr. Resnick.
Thank you. So, you know, this equipment, parking equipment gets old, and the choice is, do we replace it with the same old same old? Or are we going to get a better system and make it better for everybody when we need to replace things? And it's coming up, and I was hoping that you might talk about to our citizens the improved experience that our citizens are going to have with parking.
Ryan Nuckey, Director of Transportation Services. Very excited for your question, Mr. Resnick. We have myself, Steve Sampson-Brown, Russ Deckline's here, Kevin White from Walker Consulting's on the phone also, so we're here to field your questions for this. I want to stress that Ms. Farber had some very, very important topics there, and Mr. Resnick's question kind of leads into why we're doing this. We're looking for data, and we're looking for that equipment that works. Right now, out of our six ramps that we do have the gate equipment in, two of them are functioning properly, and the other four, we're struggling to keep them running. And it is time that we go through and update this equipment to newer technology that's going to let us and move us into the next 10 to 15 years. You are correct, Ms. Farber, we can collect zero data from our ramps right now. We use very simple cards to get in the ramps, which tell us nothing about occupancy levels daily. Russ Deckline has done a great job, and his team at viewing cameras daily to try and figure out our numbers and going through the ramps manually. People with this new equipment should be able to access the ramps faster. We've looked at multiple different options, including gateless ramps and gated facilities. We've actually looked at different timing on these gates, on how people can enter and exit. LPR systems, which would be license plate readers, so as you're pulling up to the gate, Mr. Mayor, the system will read your license plate and say, oh, it's Mr. Mayor, we need to open the gate and let him go in without him having to scan a card. So there's a lot of technology out there, and Steve Sampson-Brown has done a fantastic job in writing this RFP to put this out, not only with what we want and what we think we need, but he's allowing vendors to come back to us and say, okay, this is what you asked for, this is the new technology that's coming. This is also stuff you guys should be evaluating. With that, we're going to be looking at multiple different ways on how to move forward with these ramps. Walker Consulting, Kevin White, who's on the phone, has done a great job at showing us multiple different technology sources that we can go with. He's had a lot of questions thrown at him. We'd get in a meeting, and literally, him and I would go back and forth, well, why do you need this, and why should we do this, and what's this good for? And he's come back multiple times, like, well, Ryan, don't you remember, we talked about this? And I said, well, I'm just making sure I get the same answer. So we're very excited with what this is going to do for the city. Not only, like Ms. Farber said, we have our daily business users, but we're getting a lot more residential people downtown with the new equipment and the new access to it. We're hopefully going to be able to put a lot more residential people in these ramps at night to get multiple uses out of them.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And so the value for data for the citizens, I like to think that data leads, you know, good data leads to relentless improvement. That's what we're after, right? And so when they see the mayor's car coming, he does have to pay.
We got to point out here, the mayor don't park for free. I understand your example, but let's just make that really clear to everybody.
I wanted to bring that up so he could say that.
I'm forking over the same cash as everybody else.
But the thing is, when they see it's his car, my car, Ms. Farber's car, it automatically knows who to charge. You don't have to mess with a machine that, you know, it's not working for some reason, you're getting panicked. Okay, it's all taken care of right there, it's smooth, and it goes right on our bill, and that's one of the improvements. So other improvements, perhaps?
So I want to go back and stress that the technology is going to allow us to use resources that if people want to put their license plates on file, they can easily do that. You'll be able to go online, put your plates in, work with our parking team to make sure that we do have your vehicles on file so that the system can read that. Some people might shy away from that, so there will still be a manual process that you can pull up, swipe your card to get in the ramps. So I want to make sure that we're not requiring people to put their plates online, but we're saying it will be an option moving forward. Some other options that we're looking at is different ways to put transits in the ramps or public parking, and how to get them in the ramps and easier in certain locations. Some things that we're working on with the bigger businesses is with this hybrid workforce, not everybody's coming to work Monday through Friday. So do they need a spot Monday through Friday in the ramps, or is there a hybrid system we can build for them? So post-pandemic, we're seeing a difference in the ramps, whereas we used to see the Iowa Street ramp was probably 80, 85% full on a daily basis. Post-pandemic, we're hitting 55 to 65% full. So how many more spaces in that ramp can we open up to other people to use? And it's really utilizing what we have today to the best of what we need to do before we start investing in other parking structures as we move forward.
There was a news report just tonight about Waterloo, the city of Waterloo, trying to improve their parking and bring it up to, you know, modern standards. So this is a common thing. You must have conferences, and everybody would like to have improved parking.
Oh, agree. There's many conferences out there that we can go to. Through the Smart Parking Mobility Management Plan, Walker did a lot of downtown outreach to not only businesses, organizations, they had online surveys that people could take. So we were taking a lot of that data, correlating it all together, and putting it all together, and trying to apply it to what technology we want to move forward with. That was one of the biggest things when we were able to go out and hire Walker Consulting, is their background in this is enormous. I mean, Steve Sampson-Brown, Russ Deckline, and myself, we were able to learn as we go, but as we brought on our consulting team, they were able to say, hey, you're this big, this is the amount of parking you have, this is what's out there that we can look at. And then as we put the RFP together, they were able to help us with the verbiage in it to make sure that we're still opening it up to other opportunities that may be out there for us.
Thank you. And this is about the RFP tonight and the RFP Review Committee, but I just really am excited about this, and I want our citizens to know that things are going to get better. They're going to remain as simple as possible, but they are going to get better, and I intend to support this plan. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I have a follow-up, actually. Mr. Resnick's line of questioning. You know, last time you were here, you talked a lot about some of the ideas you're talking about tonight, these various different ways that the Walker consultants have shown us that we could actually do, operate parking throughout the city. Are all those decisions made as we go into this RFP? Or you kind of just alluded to the fact that we've got the structure that we want, we kind of have some guardrails out there, so to speak, but we are really looking to see there might be some other opportunities that a company could bring to us, and that the RFP that we're approving tonight still leaves that a little bit open to be able to let some other technologies come our way that could be useful. So bottom line is, all the decisions on exactly how parking is going to work in the city of Dubuque are not made yet.
Correct.
Okay.
The RFP is written, and I could reference the page if I looked at my notes, but right in there, it says that we're looking at, we want vendors to bid off what we're letting them know about, but we want them to look at our drawings. I believe the last six to seven pages are the drawings of ramps, and come back to us and let us know, hey, we looked at your drawings, and we think this is what we could do also. So we are letting that open, not only on the equipment side, but on the financial side, if they have different ways for us to go out and secure this instead of us using our capital, different revenue shares. So we are looking at multiple different ways that the vendors can come back to the city and give us opportunities to move forward.
Great. That's a really helpful piece of information, I think, for everybody to know, is that we tonight are approving the ability, we're actually looking to put an RFP out to hire a company that could work best with us as a partner. That's basically what we're doing tonight, and that could mean a lot of different things going forward. We haven't fully decided all the ways in which parking will work in the city. So, yeah, Steve, go ahead.
Mayor Steve Sampson-Brown, Project Manager. So I was just pointing out, to put a little finer point on Ryan's statement, so we'll be coming back as a group, end of May, early June timeframe, with what we're going to call the Implementation Plan, which will have some of the policy decisions about what ramps are available at what times a day, to what types of users. So if there's changes, that implementation plan will be the holistic vision of, hey, we've got this new equipment that we've selected, but now how are we going to implement that? And one of the things, Mr. Resnick's point about spending money, parking is not cheap. Everybody loves to park immediately in front of where they're going, but there's a cost to free parking in terms of, what I've learned to think about parking is, yes, we all want convenient and accessible parking, but what else could you have if you don't always have that parking spot right in front? That parking spot in our urban downtown takes up or reduces density, so we have spaces in town that aren't really as vibrant as others because we don't have the density. So it's a balanced conversation, and one of the things I learned is, you know, to spend money on helping people find parking conveniently, don't spend money on $33,000 as parking space to build that in a ramp. So there's a trade-off there that we're talking about with our implementation plan coming and technology to be able to find it.
Great. Thank you, Steve. That's helpful. Other discussion before we call for a vote here? Okay. Well, thank you very much for the information added to the information that you already gave us in writing here today. This has been very helpful to look over. So with that, we have a motion to receive and file and approve. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number five is Approval of Economic Development Assistant Contract by and Among McCoy Group Incorporated, City of Dubuque, and Iowa Economic Development Authority.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Resnick, second by Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan, Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending city council adopt the attached resolution approving Economic Development Assistance Contract by and Among McCoy Group, the City of Dubuque, and the Iowa Economic Development Authority for the proposed investment of approximately $33 million for the expansion of its operation in Dubuque. The proposed project would add 18 jobs and promote the city's goal of retaining and expanding business to add to the economic base. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion?
Just briefly, I want to point out that we've been talking about this for a long time. This is no surprise tonight, and we've all talked about how we appreciate the McCoy Group investing in our area. And so I expected this to come, and if there's not a lot of discussion, we've discussed it before. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Resnick. And I'll just add the caveat that I'm happy to see that the Iowa Economic Development Authority was able to work with the McCoy Group as well, so they could move in this direction. It's always great to have partners at the state level that way, too. We have a motion to receive and file and adopt the resolution. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number six is Amending Tax Increment Ordinance 30-23-A for the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District as amended by version 2024.1 of the amended and restated plan.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and further move that a requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Russell, and a second by Wethel. Oh, Krenna.
I was just going to step in for one second and tell the council that you'll see in items six and seven that the title of the ordinance, both of them reference SubArea T. That is a typo in just the title of the ordinance. Everywhere else in the body, the memos and everywhere else, it refers to the correct section, so that's what we call Scrivener's error. But I just wanted to put that on the record, that for this item number six, you are actually voting on SubArea U, and then the next one is going to be SubArea V.
Thank you, Krenna. That's very helpful. All right. Any questions, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Motion here is to receive and file and waive the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance. Second by Wethel.
Motion by Russell, and a second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber.
Resnick?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number seven is amending tax increment ordinance for the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District as amended by version 2024.2 of the amended and restated plan.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Jones?
I move to receive and file the communications and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended.
Second.
Motion by Jones, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending city council approve the ordinance attached heretofore the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District. The primary goal of version 2024.2 of the amended and restated plan is to expand the district by creating a new sub-area V. Expansion of the district is necessary to accommodate the issuance of urban renewal tax rebates under a First Amendment to the Development Agreement by and between the City of Dubuque and Seiple Warehouse LLC. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? Seeing none. Motion here is to receive and file and waive the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber?
Aye.
Roussel?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Jones?
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber?
Aye.
Roussel?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number eight is Councilmember Susan Farber's appointment to the National League of Cities AI Advisory Committee.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Resnick?
I move to receive and file.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Resnick, second by Wethel. Mike?
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Councilmember Susan Farber has been appointed by the National League of Cities to their Artificial Intelligence Advisory Committee. And the notification reads in part, "On behalf of the National League of Cities Executive Leadership and Chief Executive Officer Clarence Anthony, welcome to the Artificial Intelligence Advisory Committee. We recognize the many demands on your time and attention, so it is no small thing for you to make the time in 2024 to support cities, towns and villages across the country and how best to approach artificial intelligence. Thank you for your service on this important matter. The aim of this group is to help municipalities demystify, de-risk and ultimately harness the opportunity artificial intelligence presents for our governments and our residents." And it is signed by the National League Cities, a representative of the National League of Cities.
Thank you, Mike. Well, Ms. Farber, I have to say thank you. You know, this, first of all, I so appreciate your involvement in the National League of Cities. You know, I know that all of us get involved in our own ways. We have various different ways that we do this, both locally and regionally and nationally. And, you know, you've mentioned your expertise in telecommunications, you know, in this, in this room. And I think the fact that you have, are taking that expertise in serving the city of Dubuque and the country in this way, I think, is really important. This discussion of artificial intelligence is, has heated up quickly, let's just say, as it has been unleashed on all of us in the world. It is definitely something that everyone is running to catch up with. And the fact that you have decided to, to use your time and talent to be able to do that is, is something we really appreciate. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I wanted to give a shout out to both Terry Goodman and to Chris Coleman because I will be looking to them and with them to help us demystify on behalf of the City of Dubuque legislative priorities and other issues that do arise on this committee. And this is the first time this committee has been authorized. So this is a new committee and just very honored and pleased to have been chosen.
Well, thank you very much. Yes, definitely.
I'd like to recuse myself from this number eight and number nine.
I don't think you need to. We're just receiving and finding the great information.
No, okay. All right, thank you. Okay.
Yeah, one of those moments you get to vote for yourself. So, yep, enjoy. But thank you for the, thank you for the offer.
You're welcome.
All right. Well, the last thing I'll mention too, because I, and we have another item here. We're going to talk about some of the same things. But, you know, I sincerely appreciate the partnership of the National League of Cities and the City of Dubuque. We've actually had some pretty exciting opportunities with the National League recently. And I think that, you know, I, I'm a firm believer at this point, after, after having been a part of this and having the honor to serve here in the city for a few years now, that the relationships that we make, make all the difference in the work that we can get done. So the, the ways that we all do that in, you know, across the country, it's incredibly important. So the, the fact that we continue to build these relationships is, is something that really matters. So thanks again.
You're welcome.
Okay. Motion here is to receive and file. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber?
Aye.
Roussel?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number nine is Councilmember Susan Farber's appointment to the Federal Communications Commission Intergovernmental Advisory Committee.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Roussel?
I move to receive and file and congratulate Susan.
Second. Motion by Roussel, second by Resnick. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. So we recently received correspondence from the Chairwoman of the Federal Communications Commission, Jessica Rosenwurstel. And it reads in part, and it's directed to Councilmember Susan Farber, "I am pleased to inform you of your selection to serve on the Intergovernmental Advisory Committee of the Federal Communications Commission for a term beginning on March 13, 2024 and ending on March 13, 2026. The FCC is committed to serving state, county, local and tribal interests by actively soliciting their input in our regulatory process and vigilantly assessing the impact our decisions might have on their respective governments. The IAC serves as a valuable source of information and guidance to the commission on a broad range of telecommunications issues of concern to state, county, local and tribal governments."
Thank you very much, Mike. Ms. Farber, do you have any comments on this one?
Yes, so this is, I'm just very honored and pleased to represent not only Dubuque, but the state of Iowa on this commission. And also I wanted to give a shout out to Mike for his letter of support. This application process took several months. There was a lot of culling in terms of the credentials for this assignment. So I'm just very, very honored to be, have been selected. And again, I look forward to working with both Terry and Chris Coleman in terms of helping with the legislative priorities and hopefully promoting a lot of our issues and concerns as well at that table.
Well, thanks again, Ms. Farber.
Thank you.
We appreciate your service. A motion here is to receive and file once again. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber?
Aye.
Roussel?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number 10 is Work Session Request: Sanitary Sewer Asset Management Plan Update on Consulting Engineering Services.
Mayor?
Ms. Jones?
I move the council set a work session for Monday, March 4th at 5:30 p.m. to update the sanitary sewer asset management plan program.
Second.
Motion by Jones, second by Roussel. Date works for everybody. Excellent. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber?
Aye.
Roussel?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number 11 is Work Session Request: Project Hope Update.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Roussel?
I move to receive and file and set a work session for May 6th at 5:30.
Second.
Motion by Roussel, second by Wethel. Everybody shaking their heads, yes? Excellent. Okay. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber?
Aye.
Roussel?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number 12 is Work Session Request: Inclusive Dubuque.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Wethel?
I ask to receive and file and set work session on May 20th, 2024 at 5:45 p.m.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Wethel, second by Farber. Works for everybody as well. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber?
Aye.
Roussel?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next are council member reports.
Any reports this evening?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Farber?
So I have some more statistics to share with you. I was attended in the Dubuque Arts Council so that, you know, had an artist in residence for the past two weeks. And Gareth Johnson is his name, and he is a traditional or classical violinist, but he has kind of upped his repertoire to make it more acoustical and more pop. And so as part of the two weeks in residence, he performed 23 performances locally, 20 of which were here in Dubuque. And at each performance, there were 300 to 400 students attending, which were sixth graders and younger. And he also did a master class for the Dubuque Symphony. And he also threw partners, through DEI partners with the council. They provided tickets for 150 students and their families to attend his performance on Saturday night at the University of Dubuque. And I know that both Krena and our clerk had attended that as well. But it was just extremely well received. And I just wanted to give a shout out to the council for the Dubuque arts because it was just outstanding. And of course, a shout out to Gareth.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Farber. Mr. Resnick?
Thank you very much. Tonight, we, we talked about and honored the National Mississippi River Museum and Aquarium on their 20th anniversary. And about a week ago, I attended a Mack and Maylander event at Clark University. They are celebrating the 40th anniversary of the fire of there and the, and the rebirth, really, of Clark University. And I wanted to tell Mr. Jones and others, first responders, that there are so many great stories. In fact, Mr. Jones might have a few about what, it's the biggest event as far as a fire event in Dubuque's history. And there was a lot of great work going on, a lot of cooperation and a lot of, you know, nobody was hurt, nobody was killed. And that, that had a lot to do with luck and the good work of our first responders. Anyway, and I also want to, want to congratulate Dr. Norm Freund, who did the presentation. And of course, he reminded us of the wonderful work of Sister Catherine Dunn, who was president just a couple of months, got installed as president just a couple of months before that big fire. And she took it, took the, took the reins and really made something of it. So, you know, this, our area is, is so grateful for the institutions of higher learning here. We have some, so many quality institutions here. It really makes Dubuque a fantastic place to be, always learning, lifetime learning here in Dubuque. So congratulations to Clark University. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Wethel?
I was very grateful to Tricia Wagner and the team at ECIA for putting together an educational opportunity that I attended on February 7th. It was 10 Habits of Highly Effective City Council and Balancing the City Budget with Speaker Patrick Callahan. And there were community members that participate in city government in one way or another from Epworth, DeWitt, Durango, Macochona. And I, I really appreciated the opportunity, learned a lot. But I also left there incredibly humbled and grateful for the privilege to serve in the city of Dubuque where we have very attentive and just high caliber staff to assist us in the work we do. There's a lot of work to do.